Being just about seven o'clock, I'd like to call this border selectmen meeting to order. Can I have an acceptance of the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Happy New Year Day, everybody.
Happy New Year to you.
Thank you. Everybody's in such a great mood, Lieutenant. Do we have any walk-ins this evening? Seeing that, moving on to the report of the town administrator. Tricia?
Thank you. Couple things. One, I wanted to remind the board and the newspaper here and whomever and folks at home that the new Gator route is now in effect. And that's an expanded route going to North Situate now. So the schedule is online. And if you have any questions, particularly for our seniors, contact the Council on Aging and they will provide you additional information. But we encourage everybody to use the sloop. And now that that's finalized, you'll see some signage up long-term and it's just a great thing for our community. I want to update the board briefly, since we haven't met, of my trip to Washington, DC with Marshfield and Representative Cantwell to meet regarding the FEMA maps. As I think I shared with you informally and was reported in the newspaper, we had a very informative meeting about our ability to revise the errors that still exist in the maps even though we adopted them at town meeting. I'm happy to report that officials from Washington, DC will be coming to Situate on February 7th. And one of the things we requested was to have a public information session for residents affected by their flood insurance with people directly from FEMA that can answer questions that we're starting to get in our local building and planning departments, particularly in the three communities. So I'm making this public for the board tonight and I'll obviously be in touch with the Coastal Coalition later. Tentatively, it will be around 6:00 PM on February 7th and it will be in Marshfield at the Furnace Brook Middle School where we previously had the meetings because the attendance is so great to these meetings. The same folks that were at those meetings from the towns will be there, town administrators, planning staff, selectmen, obviously I hope you can attend. And that way we can go directly to the source to chat with folks about FEMA. There will be FEMA officials here earlier in the day for meetings with us relative to the technical aspects of the maps, working with Leslie Fields of the Woods Hole Group. And we also expect at both meetings, hopefully, to have the great representation that we've had from Senator Warren's office, particularly Senator Markey, Congressman Keating, Congressman Lynch, and also the continued help that we've been receiving from Representative Cantwell. So that's good news indeed. The next order of business I have, since it's the beginning of the year and New Year brings new hope or new initiatives or whatever, other than people perhaps going to the gym. So one of the things I want to discuss with the board is information dissemination. Through our website, Facebook, and Twitter, we do a good job of getting information on emergencies and important things like water breaks out. But we haven't focused much on correcting misinformation on social media about town programs, services, or initiatives. Increasingly, residents and taxpayers are getting information from sources other than the town. And as we know, social media can be unreliable and inaccurate and not subject to any fact-checking. Local newspapers are still important players, but the decisions about what to write about and what to print are made by others. So beginning tonight, I want to use time under my report to discuss a town issue or service that our residents are talking about and provide some factual information from the town's point of view. I'm calling it "What's the Story?" So here we go. What's the story with the new dispatch center and why does it take so long for the town to plow my street? So number one, the new dispatch center. There's lots of questions about the new public safety complex and the dispatch center and I really want to just take a moment to share what's involved in that one aspect of multiple aspects of our new public safety complex. The new dispatch center, the public safety complex is going to have a new communication center which is going to become the nucleus of emergency operations for our community. The center will bring together the currently distributed police and fire dispatch functions into a centralized, homogeneous operation. The operations now are decentralized and the 10 current employees are represented by three disparate work groups. The Situate Communications Center will be the primary public safety answering point, called the PSAP, for the town of Situate. All 911 calls will be routed there via the Commonwealth's Next Generation E911 system. It will provide the center's communication specialists with enhanced features and functionalities beyond what is available today, eliminating manual logs in the fire department, and will include advanced mapping technology, geographic data overlays, expanded services for the hearing impaired, and future capabilities for the receipt of text and video messaging. The communications center will also provide emergency medical dispatch from a single source, allowing communication specialists to move to more rapidly triage and provide life-saving service to callers. The public safety complex, and more specifically the communications center, is designed to operate 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. A myriad of building systems have been integrated to create the framework from which it's able to fulfill its mission. The center is outfitted with four highly functional consoles, two primary and two secondary, and each of them will provide the specialists with the ability to communicate with first responders, not only from Situate, but from neighboring communities, the county, state, and federal agencies. The system has mission-critical communication operations and has been designed with redundancy in mind. For each of the consoles, communication specialists will have the ability to control a vast array of systems, including two-way radio communications for police, fire, EMS, schools, DPW, and any county, federal, or state office, Next Generation E911, computer-aided dispatch, emergency medical dispatch, criminal justice information systems, voice-over IP for police and fire, and public safety complex security, including security cameras, access control, and prisoner monitoring, and finally, security cameras for municipal assets like our schools, the harbor, and fire stations. All current dispatchers are being brought over to the new center once they complete training. The town has posted the position of communications manager. This is a working dispatcher position, not a new department head position. And this person will be responsible for having the additional responsibility of doing the schedules and operation protocols as we transition and will report to a five-member steering committee consisting of both chiefs, both deputies, and the HR director. They will also ensure that our $996,504 investment in that one room alone is maintained properly, is used properly, and is also employed to the best of our ability. The net increase in the communications center budget, because we've taken police and fire and combined it to one in the FY '18 budget, is $40,000. And that includes just normal step and wage increases and a contingency for overtime. So I hope that answers some questions that folks may have in the community about the dispatch center. The second issue is the snow removal policy. And with the first heavy snowfall of the season and a mild winter last year, it probably makes sense to share our snow removal policy adopted by the board in 2001. And we posted this on our Facebook page today. And we just want to remind people a little bit of how we tackle when we have snow of appreciable amount. It's divided into the four priorities, as we said. The first one is to ensure that the police, fire, and medical vehicles can move safely on town streets. So our first priority is always to clear streets for emergencies. The second priority is to open main and secondary roads for use by the public. The third is to open residential streets. So we open the main arterial streets first, then we open the residential streets. And the fourth priority is to clear sidewalks to schools and then to other secondary roads. One of the other things I want to share with you, and Maura, if you could pass that out, no, this on the corner here.
Gotcha.
One of the questions we always get, and the DPW gets inquiries, is "Why haven't you plowed my street?" Or "Was the budget cut? Why isn't there enough resources devoted to plowing?" I believe we have 17 plowers in town, Kevin. How many do we have?
We had 55 pieces of equipment out. Total 17. It's broken up also towards schools and everything else.
Right. So what I just handed out to you was a survey done by the town of Halifax for 2015 when we had a lot of snow. What you'll see is this is a survey done by 22 communities and it lists road miles and the amount budgeted in their annual budget. It also includes what they spent in that awful winter. But I want to point out to the board that we had number two of 22 communities in terms of what we appropriate for snow removal. We appropriated in 2015 and have maintained that appropriation $495,000. Only one town is higher than us, and that's Hingham, and they have much more roads. We're sixth on this list for number of roads to maintain, number two of what we appropriate in terms of snow removal. And the average for these 22 towns that they budget is just $203,000. So I wanted to share that, so the board knows and residents know that we do devote a tremendous amount of resources to snow removal. And it could be argued even disproportionately maybe in terms of general fund dollars. And that's all I have for "What's the Story?" tonight.
Good job.
I think it's good to do that.
That was good. I just have a question. So as far as the dispatchers. So basically, the dispatchers are cross-trained for to be able to handle any of the calls. Are they identified with either the fire or the police? Either one of them? Like, there's going to be two dispatchers all at the time?
We go live March 1st. So even though everybody will be trained, we expect as we initially start that police will do the police calls and fire will do the police calls so they can learn from each other. And then July 1, there'll be no boundaries.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Question?
I'm going to go back earlier initiative to the sloop. And, you know, looking at the various stops, one of the things I think we should consider going forward, certainly whether it's at Wheeler Park, Lincoln Park, Central Park, some of the major destinations, to have some kind of either, certainly a bench for people to be able to sit down if they're waiting for the sloop, and also if they're outside, some kind of like potential enclosure that we can have. Ideally, it would be branded being that, you know, you could identify this is a place to stay because obviously for older people, standing around waiting for it, they could be 10 minutes, 15 minutes with the wind, snow, or rain, it would be nice to have an enclosure. Some of them lend themselves, like the Situate Market, they are, they could wait, but maybe we can put a bench there and talk to the landlords to do it.
That's a great idea.
But I think that's something that we should consider going forward.
All you Eagle Scouts listening?
Great project.
Great project. Also, this map is awesome. It's a laminated one. It has schedule here, so you know where and when about it's going to come pick you up. And they also, I don't know if this, does it mention here the ability to actually call? I'm sure it does.
Sure it does.
Where you can actually call in advance and get them to pick you up at your home and bring you to a destination that's within...
Three quarters of a month.
Three quarters of a month?
Two hours in advance.
Two hours in advance. Nice money.
And they're available at town hall, the library, and the COA.
Good.
You got all that covered.
And the one thing I just wanted to mention about the joint dispatch is we're incredibly increasing our technology from where we are now. And, I mean, we're on two different systems between the fire and police. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, calls come into the police station and they're forwarded to the fire department. So there's, you know, an extra step in the process here. So doing this is a huge kudo for the town in terms of just our safety. And again, the technology is taking a huge leap forward. So, and I like to hear the fact that the position that we're hiring is really a working person, so they'll...
A working person. Because we don't know, but, you know, the schedule and whatever. We had a meeting with all the dispatchers last week and, you know, I was really, really proud of how committed they are to providing the best service they can to our residents and they're all supportive of this.
Great. Great. Good job.
Okay. So moving on, we have a discussion, a vote, an acceptance of a donation to Situate Recreation. We have Director of Situate Recreation, Mara Glancy.
Hey. Good evening.
My name's Mara Glancy. I'm Director of Recreation. And I'm here to say thank you to someone who did a, who created and organized an unbelievable event this summer. I'm not going to say too much because all I can say is a big, big thank you. The event was the America's Cup that came to town. If anybody saw it, it was like, it was almost like a dream looking out there, watching it come in. I felt like I stepped back in time to 1851 when it beat the British, I think they did. It was amazing because this town was really founded through that way, through that entrance way. In 1632, I looked that up also, in our open space that I've been working on diligently. So that's how our people came here, was by boat. And not by horse or not by foot. They came in through the harbor. So it was kind of wonderful to watch that. So I'm going to, we do explain the day a little bit to the people who didn't make it. Bill, this is Bill Schmidt. He's the one that organized and donated the money to us. Also, they donated, they donated $3,000 to the Situate Rec Department Sailing Program and $2,000 to the Situate High School Sailing Team. So all the proceeds, that was a very nice event for us.
Yeah. It was a great weekend.
Please talk, here we go.
I think that, well, it's a little redundant because I don't think that there was a department that wasn't involved in putting this off. And it was really an amazing ability to, for the town to coalesce around one event and make it happen on a day that couldn't have worked out any better. It was just a terrific occasion. DPW helped us out with the sawhorses and trash barrels, fire, police, you guys, the entire town administration helping to pull it off. We had a well over 1,000 people come down and walk through. A lot of the sailing clubs showed up. Then we sailed off to Hull. We oversold. We didn't know we were going to do that well. We had oversold a couple positions, so some people were very kind and flexible in there, Marty's wife being one of them. But it was a great, great event and we're happy to have raised about $5,000. And then you had some, you had the sailing, the new Mercuries out, right? During the day? Yeah, go ahead.
Maddie Vaschan, Sailing Director. We had all of our brand-new refurbished Mercuries out there from the CPC project from a couple years ago. We were taking people around the harbor, sailing them around, telling the history of the harbor and the history of the America's Cup. All of our boats are actually named after former America's Cup boats. One of them was not a victor. But the rest of them were all winning boats. So we kind of gave everyone the rundown of if you were in a certain boat, we gave you that whole history of that boat, the race that it was in, how it did, who sailed on it. And we explained, like the old Coast Guard Station in Situate Light and how the harbor came to be and all that fun stuff. And all of my staff woke up super early on a Saturday and they were all there on time and it was incredible.
They were.
They all worked, they worked so hard all day long that I, I can't even thank them enough for that. And all of you guys showing up and coming to the reception was awesome to have that support and presence there.
It's a terrific example of something incredibly positive that we all pulled together, pulled off. And it was a great, shining example of what Situate can be and can do when we all kind of pull in the same direction. Really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you for being flexible enough to allow 140-foot vessels. Steve, down the Harbor Master's Office was sweating bullets, hoping to God that this ship is going to be able to sail in and then sail back out again, preferably sail back out again. But it worked out terrifically and really thanks for the opportunity. Hopefully, we'll get a chance to do it again sometime.
I'm looking forward to the next time he volunteers to do it.
So can we get the U.S. Coast Guard Cutter to come in?
Well, we did get the U.S. Coast Guard Cutter. We got Noah. Which one you want? You want Stella? Oh, you want Noah?
I was on Noah.
Yeah, on Orc. So we had Harbor Master, the police boat, the Noah boat, and Coast Guard.
I'm talking about the big Coast Guard.
You want that to come back?
Bill, we'll work on that project for 2036. How about that?
Probably have to dredge the harbor.
And thank you, Mara, for calling me down here and being a part of this. And obviously, the sailing program is a terrific program and we're really glad that we could help out a little bit.
Thank you.
Making this happen.
Thank you.
Bill, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. Very generous.
It was a great day. Thank you all.
Hope they get a vote.
Move to accept the donation from the America's Cup event for $3,000 to Situate Recreation.
Second?
Second, my Ms. Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept the donation of a small sailboat from the Chapman family to the Situate Recreation Sailing Program.
Discussion for a sec? Can you explain what boat they donated?
Sure. So we're trying to expand our Learn to Sail program to adults so that adults don't have to take the program with eight and nine-year-olds, that they can kind of do it like a husband and wife can come down and learn to sail and not have anything stressful. So we accept, or we thought about accepting this boat as in addition to our Learn to Sail fleet. So maybe the adults can go out on their own and learn how to sail and use these boats. So it's an extra boat to add to our fleet. It's an 11-foot, 1989 Dyer Dow sailboat, centerboard, super simple. There is nothing on that boat that doesn't need to be there. And it's beautiful.
Is it Dyer?
Yeah.
That's great.
That's a classic old Mercuri boat.
And it's in mint condition.
It's awesome. Really nice.
Thank you.
Guys, can I just ask you a little bit, once I just saw a great walk-in?
Yes. That's what I was going to say, recognize that.
Yeah, sorry. I didn't know he was here.
Who's one of the sailing instructors?
Yeah, and his team was down there and took over the evening shift to help us with America. And we're very much involved in the whole weekend of events, really. The fact of the staffs from monitoring the parking lot throughout the course of the day, too. So they were terrific. Thanks, Greg. I didn't know.
Well, we're thankful that you minded the parking lot because otherwise we'd have to.
Yeah, and then...
It's not thankless for my...
Back and forth from the parking lot, whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Want to vote on that?
No, we can vote. Do me second?
Second, my Ms. Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Can we write a letter to that family, Lorraine? Thanking them for the boat?
Okay, I'll get you the address and information.
Thank you, Mara.
Next, we have an interview with a new board committee applicant for the Public Building Commission. It's Stephen Shea. Stephen, come on up.
Thank you.
Just introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure.
I said you've got a very impressive resume, so...
Try. So thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate it. That's good. My name's Stephen Shea. Been a resident of Situate all my life here. I've spent some time in the buildings and schools and things like that. I graduated Situate High School. I entered Massachusetts Maritime Academy. I took my undergraduate there and masters there. I studied facilities engineering and environmental engineering. I spent all my career in building facilities and operations, maintenance, contracts, capital planning, engineering, and I'm moving forward in life. I have a family here. My sister lives in town. She has a couple of kids. And I saw the position online. I figured, you know, it'd be a good way to get involved in the town and kind of offer something back and see what's going on here, so.
Excellent. Appreciate the interest.
Chief, have you been to any of the meetings or do we...
I have not, no. I haven't been. I've read, you know, online about what the, you know, some of the agendas and things like that. It seems, seems pretty...
We got a lot going on, so...
Yeah, yeah. It's okay.
I just chuckle because you came at a good time. They meet about every other Tuesday night and Tricia, myself, and Nancy see a lot of each other.
Good.
And it seems like you're a perfect fit.
Okay.
But we're looking forward to working with you.
Are you okay with the frequency of the meetings?
Yeah, every other Tuesday. I mean, that's...
What happened, what's, that's because right now with all the projects going on...
I understand, there's a lot going on.
10 years ago, they'd meet every six months.
Right, right, right.
So, you know, it goes up and down.
No, I have the background, you know, I have the expertise in a lot of these fields. And I mean, I think I could offer something to the Building Commission here, you know?
Great. Looking forward to it.
And that's not just for the current buildings. I mean, the buildings that presently exist and what's going to happen the next five to 10 years.
Right.
It's an opportune time to get involved because you have an impact on existing buildings and as well as potentially future buildings, so.
That's good, that's good.
It's good. You know, it's tough to get people with your qualifications to get interested. We try to encourage people, but it's always difficult to try to peel people away from their private time and rightly so because it can be, you know, every once a month or twice a month, it takes away from your family or from other issues or other things. So appreciate you, Stephen, for putting in.
No, thank you.
We'll be voting on, did you say that, Marty already or...
Yeah, we'll be voting on it later.
Okay.
You're welcome to stay.
You can hang around if you'd like.
Okay, great.
Or you can go home, watch TV, or get dinner, and then watch TV.
I don't think we've had anybody, anyone who's applied, you know, for the appropriate committee with such great experience that you have to bring forward. So you're a great candidate.
Kevin, have you seen this resume? You might want to look at it. Pretty good.
It was nice to meet you.
Yes, thank you very much, Steve.
Thanks for taking the time to come in as well.
Thank you.
Next, we have a discussion, a vote of the grant of some easements on Oceanside Drive for repair of the seawall. Sean McCarthy. How are you, Sean? Happy New Year.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Thank you, board members. As you know, we've been pursuing any grant opportunity for foreshore protection. And last fall, we received a grant for 2.5 million from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for a section of seawall along Oceanside Drive. The section that was granted is privately owned. It's on Oceanside Drive between Sixth and the Paper Street 10th. It's in the vacant parcels across from the Marsh area. There is a sketch-up on the wall that currently shows it's the one in pink, 640 feet of new seawall to be constructed this year. The grant money is good through 2017, beginning of 18. The green construction to the north is currently underway. They're about halfway completed with that project, as well as a third project, or I guess a second project, to the south, the town-owned vacant parcel, 525 feet. That's under construction as well. So we'll have a busy summer on Oceanside Drive this year. So we approached Mr. Gulston for the appropriate easements to construct the wall as we have with the other residents in town and successfully obtained those easements from him. So we'd like to move forward. This project is on the table and out to bid, so we hope to get an early spring start on it due to the constraints of the use of the money from the state.
Do you think we'll be able just to continue south or not that quick?
Um, that, you know, with our current construction project now? This one will connect to the construction that's ongoing right now, that SPS New England is working on. The section between the pink and the blue, those residents were approached when we received our initial grant four years ago, approximately. And there were residents in that section that weren't willing to offer the grant at that time, or the easement, I'm sorry. Yeah. And that's why we ended up to the north in the green section. Those residents were all in favor of that.
My question was, can construction take place or no? Will it be, will it be a stretch of time when they'll finish, leave, and then have to...
No, we hope to have everybody continue work until they're completed. Yeah. With each of their own independent contracts and they all have timelines to finish upon.
Have we pretty much given up on the easements to the south there?
Um, no, I wouldn't say we've given up on any particular area. Right now, we're focusing on the construction that's going on. This third project will have...
We've really made a headway with them, though.
Not with what's been going on.
Sean, I think the focus is if, because of the, the fact that some of the neighbors did not want to grant an easement to the town, to be able to allow the town to go and
Not with what's been going on.
Sure. I think the focus is if, because of the fact that some of the neighbors did not want to grant an easement to the town, to be able to allow the town to go and use the wall, repair the wall, fix the wall, as well as to allow people to walk on the beachside when and if, with, if there is any beach. We've decided to go other areas where people are willing to do just that. And the walls that are elsewhere is equally as bad as the wall that, shall we say, is not the wall that hasn't the old wall, the area at the end of 10th Avenue. So, you know, my feeling on it is no. We go to the other areas that desperately need it, and we'll repair, we should repair those walls, because if they're creating a bottleneck, then so be it. We'll deal with the other areas because it's equally as important. And if the people are willing to do it without stymying or delaying us, then so be it, you know. It's a shame, because frankly, some of those residents who probably were willing to give an easement now are stuck because their other neighbors aren't willing to do it, and they are putting themselves at risk. But there's nothing we can do. We don't own the wall. We don't own the property. And unless they're going to allow the town to go on with all these millions of dollars that we're investing, we can't do anything about it. So, you know, I think it's a shame, but we have to look forward.
And unfortunately, the hoes behind them, you know.
Yeah.
The hoes behind them are the ones that suffer.
I just like to say, I think it's great, you know, just remembering back, talking about all the seawalls that need to be repaired. And you've got, what, over 2,000 feet there under construction in the last, what, two years, I want to say? So, that's great. That's a lot of work. Thank you. And I just have one question. Does the shovel have to be in the ground to maintain that grant before July 1st? Is that why?
The contract is written, and the schedule is set up.
Has to be set. Okay.
Correct.
1.5 has to be spent by July 1st.
Okay.
So, we'll have to very aggressively. That's why the next meeting will be coming into award the contract.
Okay. Great.
Quickly.
Thank you. Need a motion?
Please.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to accept grants of easement as a gift and for consideration of less than $100 for the attached properties located on Oceanside Drive.
Second, Mr. Vignani. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean.
Good night.
You, too. Sitting in two weeks with the contract.
Perfect. Next, we have a discussion about the public safety complex. It's going to be a contract to W.B. Mason for the furniture, not to exceed $182,077 on the moon. OPM Vertex, all right, John?
Good. How's everybody?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you. Real quick, because I see you have big binders in front of you. So, the FFNE procurement for the project has gone very well. The budget line item we had was $300,000, and today, with the addition of this PO to a small one that you approved previously, we're $190,000. So, there's still some smaller things to buy, but this PO represents the large majority of the furniture, fixture, and equipment that needs to go into the new public safety building. So, I believe you have the 15-page breakout in front of you that basically details every chair, every desk, every bed, wardrobe, whatever we need. And the total of the PO is 182,076.67. This was competitively shopped out by Giovanna from Doran Whittier, and in the end, couldn't beat Mason's price. Anybody else could. So, worked out great.
Were the items all specifically spec'd by the design team, actual vendors? There's no product substitution that would take place?
I don't believe so. I think she got pretty much everything she was looking for.
There was pretty much.
Saw samples. I mean, you can see the level of detail that's in this. I know that in the last few days, numbers tweaked a little bit as she was subbing in a few, changing a few things. But at the end of the day, Mason still had the best price, and I've worked with them a number of times. They, they're so big. They just, they do a great job. Any questions?
No. So, what else is left? Just ancillary stuff?
Yeah, smaller things. You know, I think there's this little bit for the triage room. Really, it really is, you know, a couple of items. I'd have to check with Giovanna to get the specifics.
So, there's going to be potentially $100,000 of a saving?
Yes.
Great.
Yep.
The public safety building is doing very well on contingency and change orders.
We're over, we're about 93% complete as of the end of December, and still on for substantial completion the third week of February.
February 21st.
Really?
Yeah.
I would make sure that if the triage isn't left or next, to make sure that, you know, the money spent in the triage, that's going to be an important.
Yeah, there's more to that. It's just a different kind of equipment vendor.
Different vendor.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a few other ancillary things that are being purchased from other, from other folks.
What I'm saying is, I don't mind spending more on the triage, you know, not trying to get the cheap, because that's going to be the triage center for, for people. But in any event, that was my point.
But Chief Murphy and Deputy Elliott have been working directly with Giovanna on that stuff, like, you know, gurney and all that stuff.
Good.
More motion?
Please.
Move to award contract to W.B. Mason for public safety complex furniture for an amount not to exceed $182,076.67.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm standing for him.
All right, good.
Great.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
See you soon.
Okay. Next, I'm moving on to presentation of the FY18 Town Operating and Capital Budget Review, Tricia and Nancy.
I put a copy in front of you. So, which one of you? This one?
Thank you, Lorraine. Actually, I appreciate that, because I do. I prefer that.
There's a lot of information. Uh, we shut off one of the last. Ooh. We only have one. One more. Oh, just one. Thank God. No. So, um, you have the operating capital budget books. John has them. They total probably over 800 pages. And what Nancy and I are going to do is try to consolidate that 800 pages into 16 slides to give you an overview of the budget for FY18. This includes both the operating and capital budget. Nancy will do the capital piece, and I'll do the operating piece. And this budget, and I had forward to you the budget messages for both capital and the operating budget last week. I hope you had a chance to read them, because they have a little more specificity about some of the initiatives and challenges in this budget. But one of the things, unlike previous budgets, is we have a lot of new facilities coming on with new costs, and we have fixed costs increasing more than two and a half allows us to really keep within level funding. So, the message for this budget is staying the course with fiscal discipline. And so, there were tough choices that needed to be made in this budget, not drastic, but clearly more challenging than they have been the prior four or five years. So, before, we can talk about FY18. We're in FY17 now, but let's talk about how we ended June 30th of 2016. We had a certified free cash of 3.247133. It's the highest cash, free cash since I've been here, and I don't know before that. But we did use a lot of that for one-time revenues. We deposited substantial amounts back into the capital stabilization fund and into the stabilization fund after that amount was certified at the special town meeting. And the reason for that is because they were one-time revenues. So, often people think, you know, you can do this, you can do that, because you're always generating over $2 or $3 million of free cash a year. But sometimes you get one-time payments, and those don't recur in future years, so we have to always be mindful of that. Our general fund receipts and new growth were up over the financial forecast projections by the amounts that you see there. And so, that's helped us forecast better for FY18 as we continue to see some fixed cost increases. And FY16, as in 17, in the budget you'll look at in FY18, reflects a continued investment in our capital, including roads, school, technology, foreshore protection, water supply, and sewer improvements. We have maintained our AA+ bond rating. We get another bond rating tomorrow, because we are converting $12 million to permanent debt in a few weeks. And so, we had the bond rating call Nancy, Pam, and I yesterday, and we expect to hopefully maintain that rating. There's a number of different areas that the rating companies are focusing on, as opposed to what they were doing a few years ago when we got the increase in our rating. So, we're working really hard to maintain that. So, that's how we close FY16. Let's talk about the pluses and minuses for where we are in FY17. Our building activity continues to increase above projections. However, that's not new homes or new building, per se. We do have plenty of that. What this mostly is attributable to is people are putting additions on decks, garages, second floors, you name it.
A remodel.
That's where we're seeing the increase. Our solar, wind, and meals tax revenue, which are all new dollars to the town general fund since 2012, are really starting to become valuable to us in terms of assisting with operating budget needs. And the public safety complex and the town library are going to be on schedule and on budget. A lot of people think that the library is wildly off-budget, but I have to remind folks that the bids for the library came in much lower than the amount the town authorized. So, that is what allowed us to do the $800,000 improvement to the library. So, we expect, as John Lemieux just said, the public safety building's 96% complete. We expect to be in there February 21st. In fact, the construction meetings are now being held in the building, because there's heat. Major infrastructure repairs on our water system and sewer systems that the board's familiar with that we continue. Sean McCarthy just spoke about our seawall repairs being completed, and we're having additional work in the spring. Other things, I had the second successful year of our police marine unit. We automated payroll for all town and school. We're going to automate all the payroll in April, which is a huge undertaking for the accounting office and the treasurer's office. As you know, last year, we always had two standalone financial systems. The general ledger and accounting didn't talk to the treasurer's books. We integrated all those last year with Munis. The next step of that is automating payroll for 700 employees. And that's all going to take place in April. It's a huge undertaking that we're doing in addition to some of this other stuff. The day shift paramedics that the town was awarded by an arbitration agreement with the fire department is working out splendidly. It's really made a difference in service and our ability to staff the second ambulance during the day, so we're very excited about that. And as you know, we have a feasibility study and project in process right now for potential new locations for the senior center. So, what are the?
Before you go to that one, on number two, the solar, wind, and meals tax assisting with the budget needs, how much of that money is actually going into the budget?
None of it's going into the budget unless we appropriate it as part of that at-town meeting.
Okay.
So, right now, we, it's a revolving fund, so we can tap into it if we need to, but traditionally, we haven't. The only thing we've really used is nominal amounts, and I want to say 20,000, maybe 30,000 for utilities and for streetlights. That covered shortfalls in May or June of last year. Is that pretty much correct?
Okay.
But.
So, none of this is in the budget?
None of this is in the budget. As you remember, Tony, we're using 100,000 for solar and wind for the next 20 years on the debt.
Right.
But as is mentioned in my budget message, and I think later in this PowerPoint, we intentionally didn't use that money because we knew these building projects were coming online. So, now we're using that revenue specifically to offset the increase in utility costs for the new middle school, library, and public safety complex. So, it's revenue-neutral in term for the taxpayer. And again, in sort of keeping with the overall underlying theme here, is we're living within our means. And, you know, that's very important to me as your town administrator, and I know it is to the board who gives me my marching orders. And that's made a challenging budget to present to you, but also one that, you know, we need to make sure we can be all things to all people. So, the challenge was to continue to be able to have funds necessary for the maintenance and repair of our physical plant, particularly their capital needs. I mentioned earlier, we have growing fixed costs for employee benefits, which are on the next slide. But the fixed costs continue, as they have for the last several years, to escalate beyond the 2.5% that we're allowed to raise the levy limit. As I mentioned, the operational costs and staffing for the three new buildings. Another thing, and, you know, Situate does a lot of things that other towns don't. A lot of it's because of our location on the coast. A lot of it is because of our own initiatives that we undertook relative to clean energy, hoarding, fax, opioid abuse. So, there's significant staff time devoted to a lot of things other than the day-to-day operation of the town. And one of them that we spend a significant amount of time, a disproportional amount of time, is to ocean and storm-related things. We have a lot of storms. We have to clean up. We have to mitigate. But through Nancy Durfee and the DPW and conservation and planning, we also do a lot on the CRS. We have the highest rating in the state for the community rating system. A lot of towns don't even do that. I think only, I think, 15 or 16 in the state do them, and we have 76 coastal communities. And the hazard mitigation grant as well that elevates houses. And our staff work is unrelenting. As I just mentioned, we have a lot of building going on, and that impacts how many hearings and reviews the planning board, the conservation commission, and the board of health have to deal with. This year, and after, and going in, once we go into these buildings, not only are we transitioning to new buildings, we also have to deal with the vacancies in those buildings that we are leaving. And that's a huge thing on our horizon and a challenge for us to deal with. The next bullet, I talk a lot about creep, and this is a point I really want to emphasize, is when you have a budget that's $3,000 or $4,000, and they only ask for a $500 or $1,000 increase, and we grant that each year, that's called creep. So, that 500 or 1,000 then becomes a $4,000 or $5,000 increase over a period of time. So, this budget really keeps all those budgets level-funded to avoid the creep. And that was particularly difficult in my recommendation this year for some departments, but we've done some healthy increases in budgets over the past few years, and we really need to maintain that or keep it level, because we can't continue to have every single budget getting an increase every year. Clearly, one of the goals of the town is to keep up with the changes in technology to improve service delivery and transparency. We are revamping our entire website as I speak, and we'll have a new website for you in a couple of weeks that I think will be more user-friendly and have more valuable information. The addition of an IT person to help Bill Sheehan last year in the budget has helped tremendously. That was one of his focuses, to work with Bill on that. And the second focus of that position is to really have us become more adept and use more our GIS mapping systems that we have in-house. And so, the challenge for me really is balancing community demands with a limited revenue source. So, here are the focal points of the budget. It's a level services budget. You haven't seen me use this term before. Often, it's used in school departments. So, basically, what it means is we will be able to provide the same services that we've provided this year, but probably not a lot more. And so, one of the things that we really need to be mindful of is we can't take on more stuff. We can't commit to new things because we are doing all we can to handle what we've already agreed to. The budget is balanced, and we're not in accordance with our policies using any free cash. We project new growth to increase about $248,000. We're going at the level-funded local aid as we do at this time. Every year, Governor Baker will give us his budget numbers at the MMA conference next Saturday. However, the town does not use the governor's budget. We use the House Ways and Means budget, which comes out in April. We think local aid's okay, but I would remind the board that there's already been nine C cuts for FY17 by the governor. He hasn't touched local aid, but again, we'll have to see how the state is making up that deficit that they have in their projections already for FY17. One of the things that we needed to contemplate in the FY18 budget that we haven't had to do for two years is all the union contracts on the town expire except for one. So, we need to be making an allocation for those contract settlements, even though we have not reached agreement with the unions. Indeed, we don't even begin bargaining with the units until February and March. But this budget contemplates that and sets aside funds for the eventual settlement. So, again, we're not cut short. And as I said, the fixed costs and the personal services account for the major increase. And as I said, the fixed costs and the personal services account for the major increases, not so much for the COLA, but 80% of the staff in this town hall right now has been here less than five years. So five years ago, most of the people that worked in this building had probably maxed out on the wage and classification. Now we have everybody in step and lane changes, so that's an extra factor we have when we deal with the personnel services budget. And it also maintains the town's commitment to economic development, road maintenance, and foreshore protection. So in a nutshell, these are our big budget drivers in terms of fixed costs that we look at in the forecast and try to project what it will be, and then back out what's left over, and that's what we have to do for anything new or different. But when you look at these fixed costs and the percentage increase in the right-hand column for all of them, you see that once we go through this exercise with these nine items, there's no wiggle room left. And as a matter of fact, not only is there no wiggle room, we have to go into bone a little to meet these costs. One of the challenges we have with liability insurance is we were carrying a substantial increase in the liability insurance in our projections for bringing the middle school, library, and public safety building online. And we were able to have Maya come and give us some preliminary estimates, even though those buildings aren't online yet. And that was about $80,000 more than the high balance that we were covering. So as you can see, this added to the challenges of trying to have a balanced budget in terms of trying to meet departmental requests and what your department head managers want to do as far as moving the department forward. One of the unknowns right now is South Shore Voc Tech. 10% is the best-case number. We don't know exactly how many students are going to be enrolling in there for a while yet. We work really closely with the superintendent there, Tom Hickey, and he's provided us with his best guess right now, but it's contingency as well, so it might change. So here are some budget highlights. Again, it maintains our services and programs. It contemplates the new cost for facilities. It increases allocations for road improvements. That's one thing that was important to board members at our retreat, is to devote more money to roads. I have doubled the allocation to our roads this year to allow us to do more. Provides for reasonable and equitable collective bargaining settlements. Expands our foreshore protection and coastal mitigation with beach nourishment and seawall grants and loans. Addresses our water shortage issues that we experienced with the drought, so we have future planning in place to be able to deal with that going forward. Keeps the trash reduction fee for one more year, which I know is important to some folks. And recognizes and provides for staff impacts as a result of increased development by creating a new position. And preserves initiatives previously supportive with grant funding. So there's two things in terms of personnel going on here. Nancy Durfee's position was created because at least 30% of her salary was offset by administrative costs from doing the hazard mitigation grant. We did not get the grant this year. So that's money from the general fund, about $50,000, that needs to support Nancy's position. Now, Nancy's brought in $8 million of grant money in the last year, so...
How much?
Eight million.
Oh, enough.
So clearly, A, it was a good idea to create this position, and secondly, of course, we're going to maintain it. But Nancy's work is foreshore protection, so 50,000 of the foreshore protection money is going to Nancy's salary. We're going to have a similar challenge next year when the fax grant goes away, and we're going to be 100% responsible for the salaries of those individuals. So these are things that the town knows is on the horizon and is trying to plan accordingly to address. So I'm going to turn it over now to Nancy for the rolling capital plan, but before I do, there's two things I want to point out to the board. On your desk tonight is something I did for the first time last year called Citewitt by the Numbers. And what this does is list, by numbers, what we did last year. It's not exhaustive, but I go through the budget, and I pull all the statistics from each of the departments, and I compile it into this one document. The other document, if more of you will pass out now, is, I don't think it's any surprise to the board, that we get grants. And this year, we got a lot of grants, and we continue to get a lot of grants. As a matter of fact, this sheet needed to be updated late this afternoon because we got another grant today. Select Mandani, he asked me last week if we just had a compendium of all the grants that we get, and if you, for folks at home who can't see it because A, it's dark, and B, you don't have it.
We can't see either.
It's two-sided, and it has over three dozen grants that this town's been able to achieve in the last few years. So...
And what's the total?
I don't think, it's totaled. It's not totaled, I don't think.
It's not?
No, it was. It's totaled by department, but I don't think it has a grand total.
Oh.
Nancy?
So I want to move on to for the other binder that's in front of you, the white binder, which is the five-year rolling capital plan. The recommendation for fiscal 18 is just over $7 million. Of that, 2.7 million is for the general fund. Of the 2.7 million, only $400,000 is recommended for borrowing. That's for culvert improvements. As Tricia previously noted, the road improvement recommendation has been doubled to 400,000. This is in addition to the Chapter 90 money, which is usually around a half million dollars, and in addition to the money in the operating budget for roads, which is another $200,000. The town has spent well over $1 million on its roads in the last year and a half. It also has a continued commitment to foreshore protection in the last seven years. There's $17.6 million of projects for foreshore protection, 10 million of which are on the board that Sean McCarthy spoke to earlier. Of that $10 million, 60% was grant-funded, 40% is low-interest loans. Well, there are also a commitment in this plan to ADA projects to update the transition plan, as well as to improve access for all citizens. Support for the schools, including school technology, some building repairs on several different facilities, and general facility improvements across the district. We are also recommending demolition of the soon-to-be decommissioned police station and replacing of the turf field. We wanted to bring to the board's attention that the capital, budget, capital stabilization fund allocations that we have done in the past, one of those was the turf field recommendation. We allocated, I think it was $50,000 two years ago to that, and we're going to now come back and do that project. There's several of those in this recommendation in the general fund, the Hummerock Fire Station renovation, and also the Loader. Those were all projects that we set aside funds for in a previous fiscal year, and now we're coming back with the balance saying, okay, let's do this project. We have enough. So by doing it in phases, it's made it more affordable. On the enterprise funds, there's $4.3 million being recommended. For the water enterprise, this focuses on water supply projects, including redevelopment of all the wells that currently exist, beginning the new well site at the Dolan Field, doing that design engineering and permitting, and also reservoir, a reservoir support project to help with our reservoir. As Tricia noted with the grants, one of the grants that we received recently, I think in the last week, was the grant for the reservoir expansion project that we funded the town share at the special town meeting. For the sewer infrastructure, we're looking at a major I&amp;I project at Cedar Point. As Rick Moska, the sewer, acting sewer superintendent, and Kevin Cafferty, the DPW director, had before you a few meetings ago, Cedar Point is a major inflow of seawater into the system. I think it's .4 MGD. So that's something that is a major focus. It is a very substantial project, but it will yield a positive result in our I&amp;I as that goes forward to other items on the sewer master plan for expansion. The Waterways project is going forward, two projects, excuse me, Waterways Enterprise, Marina Electrical System project that's being required by the electrical inspector to prevent any electrocutions and to further safeguard the electrical systems down in the marinas, and also to install de-icers. These would be so that we could leave the docks in year-round and no longer have to bring them out onto Cole Parkway.
Will that project come before us through capital or otherwise?
It's in the capital plan.
So when they come forward, okay, I just, interested in...
The transfer station has one project that's being recommended, and that's to replace the methane gas piping. That piping is beginning to settle and crack, so they want to replace all that so that the system will work adequately. And also for Widow's Walk, the Widow's Walk debt has finally been retired. The last payment was in November, and we are now looking at what are the major capital needs which have been on the plan. One of them is the irrigation system. The irrigation system for golf courses have approximately a useful life of 20 years, and ours has reached its useful life, so we need to start looking at design and engineering, which we are recommending funding for in fiscal 18, and then for construction to do that in probably fiscal 19. A project of that size is estimated to be about $2 million. So we are also recommending the establishment of a Widow's Walk capital stabilization fund and setting aside funds into that towards that project, as there will be additional funds available in the Widow's Walk operating budget because it no longer has the debt payment of over $300,000 annually. On the capital stabilization, happily, you can't read your presentations that are in front of you because you can't see the mistake that's on that one particular page. I have a new page for you. The plan recommends $163,776 to go into capital stabilization fund. $63,776 is a portion of the meals tax. It's unallocated for any purpose. It would just be for general use in the future. And 100,000 is being set aside for the replacement of the 1987 rescue pumper. To date, the, I wanted to give you a little update on the capital stabilization fund. It was established at the November 2012 special town meeting. To date, the town has put into the capital stabilization fund, or is recommending to put in, $2.4 million, and has authorized for use, or has proposed to authorize for use, $1.6 million. So that fund has been extremely useful over the last four to five years, and it's a real credit to the town for creating it outside of the stabilization fund as another source of funding for capital projects and for planning. As I previously mentioned on the last slide, many of the allocations and many of the projects that you'll see tonight on the capital plan, or as you review the capital plan, show phasing, and these phasing projects have been done by using capital stabilization, either the regular capital stabilization or the capital stabilizations in each of the enterprise funds to do that, or in some cases, such as the sewer project where there are three clarifiers, and all clarifiers need to be rehabbed, they've been done in a phases, three phases, one a year. So you're going to see phase three of a clarifier project be recommended in fiscal 18 to finally finish that project off. So right now, in the budget book, you'll see that we have 18 tentative warrant articles for the April 26, 2017 special and annual town meetings, down five from 2016. It includes all the operating enterprise capital, capital, capo, budgets, and revolving funds, and there are no petition articles. So now that we've talked about fiscal 16, 17, and 18, we need to look ahead into fiscal 19 and beyond and just have an idea of what's on the horizon. As many of the board members are long-serving members, they know what happens with the Plymouth County pension assessment every few years. It does a little bit of volatility. We've shown you that graph before. I think it's in your budget documents. It will go low, say to a 3% to 4% increase, and then it'll spike into double digits. Fiscal 19 is a spike year. We do expect that there will be a spike in that assessment, and that is the normal trend for it. It's been 4% to 5% for the last two years. After we were told that we should plan on 8%, they didn't hold to that, so there will have to be some type of reckoning for that, and fiscal 19 is something we need to be aware of, potentially will be a cost increase year. We've taken steps for our health insurance to try to get a little bit more predictability with that by the public employee committee action that we took this year that the board ratified a meeting ago or two meetings ago, which will bring us into the Maya group away from the Mayflower Municipal Health Group, which we believe will bring us more predictability and will help us with our budgeting for that particular fixed cost. There are FEMA reimbursements for storm damage repairs that require the 25% match. Those projects are beginning to move forward. The first one, the $1.6 million for Third Cliff, was announced. There is approximately $8 million worth of projects, so as those continue to come through, we will have to look at coming up with a 25% match. The other post-employment benefit liability, which I know you're all aware of, and sometimes you feel we harp on it, but that's our job, is sometimes just to harp on things. The OPEB liability is alive and well, and it is out there. The pension liability was the problem from 20 years ago. This is the problem for the current day. This problem is a real problem. It is something that the rating agencies have turned their attention to and are laser-focused on. As you saw from the previous slide, our OPEB funding has gone up 3.6% or $3,000 between fiscal 17 and fiscal 18. Our budget for active plans went up 11.9%. So we're not keeping pace. That's something that's of a concern. We have to monitor and deal with that concern as much as we can with all of the other fixed costs that we have, but we do need to bring it to your attention as always so that you're aware of that liability. As of our last actuarial evaluation, it was $60 million. Our next actuarial evaluation will be on June, as of June 30th this year, and then we'll have an update as to what that liability is. The operation and maintenance costs from the new facilities and the existing facilities, we knew that we were going to have increased costs. We had planned for those and built into the fiscal 18 budget projections increases for that, but fiscal 19 will be a really true year. We'll have a full year of the new buildings underneath our belt, so we'll really know what the cost of those new buildings are. They are more efficient, but they will also have higher costs because some of them are simply larger, but also they just cost more to run. We'll be continuing to implement the public facilities master plan. We still always have our fleet, school, and scheduled maintenance capital needs that need to be addressed. We're continuing to examine the adequate supply of water and expansion of sewer capacity and connections for all residents to those two major, important items. And we also want to look at the continuation of programs that Tricia already spoke about that were funded by grants, such as the Coastal Resource Officer, which is being dealt with in fiscal 18. There is a potential for some offset with a grant, but we do not know if that's going to happen. As Tricia said, the main grant that used to help fund that position, we did not receive. And also that the fax grant, its final year is in the middle of fiscal 19. So that position will need to have funding made available for them for the balance of
So just in closing, we have a great group of people that work for the town, and there's 207 of them on the town side. We have a total employee complement in the town and school of 662 people. They're your friends, they're your neighbors, they're the people that you see at the grocery store, and they work really, really hard for the taxpayer. And as I said, we have 207 on the town side. The new budget recommended for FY18 proposes 1.4 additional positions, including a Director of Community and Development, Director of Planning and Development, I'm sorry. We had 208 employees in 2009. So while there's different positions in different places, and they're new, we had less employees in 2009, and yet we're doing much, much, much more in terms of that. So, and I think that's helpful to know as we move forward in this budget. And that's it. Thank you. We're happy to answer any questions.
That was a very good summary.
You can read all your stuff. That was in the dark. That was great, and I'm glad you called out the staff and the amount of projects that they're working on, Trish, and you and Nancy and everyone, because there's a lot going on in town, and sometimes I don't think people really realize how hard everybody does work and is dedicated to the town. Your books, you know, are fabulous, and the level of detail is unbelievable, which obviously bubbles up from your staff as well. So, thank you. It helps our job to be a little bit easier as we go through, and we have all that detail. Can I, may I ask one quick question, Mr. Chairley Tur? What was the biggest turnback into free cash? Because that's a very, we have a lot more to work with than we have had ever.
We have two major contributors that were one-time jobs in the arm, so to speak. One was the FEMA reimbursements from previous storms. There are three major disasters that we are still collecting funds for, which were Storm Sandy, Storm Nemo, and Storm Juno in 2012, 13, and 15 respectively. And that was about $285,000. That was the funds that we captured and put into the stabilization fund for future purpose. And then the investment income that we earned... And then the investment income that we earned in Pam's great investments of the bond. We issued a major $88 million bond in June of 2015 to fund the building projects as well as phase one and two of the water projects. And that's been generating an enormous amount of investment income as those proceeds have been spent down. So there was approximately $487,000 in the general fund alone beyond projection that was captured and put into capital stabilization for future capital purpose. And the same happened with the, there was a similar amount for the water enterprise. And it hasn't been captured into anything but it is closed down into water retained earnings.
But in general, local restraints over projection and departmental turnbacks on the town side will usually generate our free cash. And now we had those one time.
What's the total of departmental turnbacks? So when we have $3 million of free cash, there's not $1 million of department turnbacks?
It was several hundred thousand dollars in turnbacks.
Yeah, it's usually around half a million.
Wow. There's a spreadsheet you usually give me every year that kind of breaks that down?
Yeah, it's in the budget book as well this year. So I was looking for that email, and I don't think I ever sent it to you, so my apologies for not sending it to you, but it's definitely in the budget because I had to look it up. Because I thought I'd take it off the.
Can we share our numbers on Facebook? Yes, we actually, it's going on Facebook tomorrow, but Nancy gave me some more stuff, so.
Yeah, no, no, it's fine. I just think it's great to share.
I just think it's, I think it's important because, you know, being on this board for 10 years and coming out of, Sean, you've been longer, you know, one of the first things that people always complain about is, well, nobody's, what about grants? Why haven't you gone for grants? You know, constantly complaining, you know, telling us what we should do and what we should be looking for. And I said last week, we've been getting a ton of grants. And that's when I said, Trish, you know what? Why don't we put this down on paper so that people understand just exactly what the town employees are doing? They're going out to get grants. They're trying to save taxpayer money. And I have to say, I think it's great. Put it on the website. Put it on a page so that people understand exactly the thousands and actually millions of dollars for the town. I mean, there's 13 million, another 9 million, and that's for FY16 and I think you're saying FY17, if I'm not mistaken? This doesn't go back, I mean, we should go back to 2013, 2012 and show all of the grants that the town employees have been able to get for their town. It's just, it's incredible, so.
Yeah, it's great.
And Mr. Mayor, that didn't include the education grants?
Yeah.
That's just town side.
Just town side. So I just think if we, if we begin to throw it out there so people understand, this is what.
$13.7 million in grants.
Town has done to try to utilize as many other resources other than saying pay more taxes, you know? It's a good.
And those are a little distorted because it's for the buildings, you know, the grant for the library, the school from the library. But still, a million dollars is a ton of grant money.
Yeah.
And this is, well exceeds that.
I think the smaller things, that's what I liked about, like the fire and different other things. $11,000, $4,900. I mean, it's not just the big ticket items. They're looking to try to get grants for other items that, that are out there that other communities are going to get other than, but for us trying to apply for and use them. I mean, the stuff that we need, we apply for and we get it, you know? I think it's, it shows that we're looking all across the board to try to minimize as much of the costs to the taxpayers here in town.
And every other town's doing the same thing, so the competition's there.
Yeah. And it takes a lot of effort to.
That's right.
To writing it, so.
Right.
And as we know, Nancy's paid for herself 10, 20 times, so, great.
Trish, do you want to just go in the order we're in, starting with the.
Yeah, Steve's here.
Come on, yeah.
Do you want to?
Again, we're not voting any of these this round.
Do you want to do the mission statement?
Sure. It's a short one. The mission of the assessor's office is to ensure a process of fair and equitable assessment in accordance with Massachusetts general law and Department of Revenue guidelines, directives, and policies.
As far as the budget goes, level funded as requested, no significant changes, only anticipated colders in July when we start. As far as goals and objectives, we hope to, we are going to update the value of all our second home personal property accounts in preparation of our next reevaluation. We will hope to increase taxpayer participation in the community preservation surcharge exemption process. Continue to update our parcel maps, enhancements with the GIS system. That's with Bill Sheen was able to, a grant, a grant to help us do that. Also hope to increase, improve the method in which we collect information for the vote exercise process. We had a couple of little difficulties this past year, but we hope to improve that next year.
Well, Steve, your budget's $207,000, up from 204. Four people in your department. Get quite a lot of work done down there, so.
With one vacancy?
There is, yeah.
So is that, is that, I noticed in your risks and challenges, is that, are the challenges that you're dealing with with now three? Is that what you're, were?
I'm out in the field every day from May to September.
Okay.
Every day. We have five-minute permits, number of sales that we look at, so.
Is this the reevaluation year?
No, unfortunately it was put off. It's not this year, not even next year. The Municipal Modernization Act pushed all towns out, not all towns, but most towns out. So it won't be until.
2019?
19.
Two years out.
Then we're going to a five-year cycle after that.
The GIS now, because I haven't actually looked at it, but I've seen other towns for purposes, so are we able to tap on, say, the property and it will pop up with the parcel ID and then you go to?
That's the goal, and that's, that's the intent, to get to that point. Right now you don't. We have GIS embedded into our software that the public can't look at online. They can come into our office and look at it. This will enable them to do that in a better fashion with sort of link all the assessing data to that. And actually, Bill can address that, but not how he can, honestly, because he's.
Is that a goal for this year or is that going to be completed this year, do you know?
No, it's ongoing still. It's happening, but we intend to do it, go step further with it next year.
Yeah, I, now is that also, I'm asking you this, but is this also linked to the building department potentially?
It all will be, yes.
Will be?
Yes.
I remember Rick Murray was talking about this, I think back in 2010 or 11 or 12. And, but I'm, to get it finally across the finish line would be a great thing because to link it all, to be able to find out all the information, it's for building purposes and tax purposes.
In order for Bill to get the grant, we had to ensure that DOR as well as others, that we would continue to update our link. It's like a location ID in our software, which we will do, obviously, to have that all continue to improve. But it's a work in progress, always, this is.
I'll talk, when Bill comes in, I'll ask him more about, because I'm curious to know what kind of deadlines we have on that or expectations to go live with the public. Because I know, like I said, other communities have it, not all.
No.
Some of them do, and I think it's a, it's a really nice benefit to the community.
No question.
So would that be number one on your wish list, if you could have something above and down, what's on these pages?
I'd say so, right. It makes everything easier for not just us, the public as well. You know, we, a couple of years back, maybe five years ago, put out our assessment data. That, that's made it much easier for us in the sense of appraisers and realtors and others being able to access the data at home, create up some time for the staff. This will be another step towards that.
I'd just like to say, commend you for your, your, your goal number two, which is to take an active step in helping our senior taxpayers and other moderate-income taxpayers take advantage of the easement of the CPC surcharge.
Yes.
Because I think, you know, any way that which we can help those that qualify for that type of exemption is, is great.
Well, we, we don't get the participation we thought we'd get. Initially, we thought we'd have hundreds that would file, and we may get 50 or 60.
They don't know about it.
They don't know about it. Well, there's some, some reasons they don't file. Income information has to be provided to us. Some people have issues with, understood they don't want to always give it to us.
So it's not strictly just age-related?
It's, it's, there were income guidelines, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else say anything?
Nope.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Have a great night.
Tell them, tell everybody we appreciate it, the hard work. We really do. They don't get to see them though, much, but I'm like, for tax purposes, you're the most important to assess, so there you go.
Moving on to selectmen, 123. 123, they make that easy for us.
So one of the things we've done this year is, last year we consolidated a lot of line items, booze and lubricants, training, postage, legal advertising. This year is the second year of a two-phase process to totally collapse the town administrator's office into the selectman's office, so it's one budget. So you have three sets of goals and objectives because you have Lorraine's as your assistant and selectmen, and then Michelle's, and then mine. So Lorraine, do you want to come to the center table and go over your goals for?
Sure.
We'll do her before mine. She's, hers are selectmen. And they're right after the town administrator's goals.
Hi. Lorraine. So I think I'll start with some of the accomplishments of the selectman's office and working very closely with Michelle Segazza in the town administrator's office. We've coordinated and streamlined employee recognition awards as to give employees their recognition in a more timely manner instead of waiting for a year, which is what used to happen. We developed and implemented the petty cab licensing process, managed all annual appointments from boards and committees, which are over 50 boards and committees, including individuals. It's quite an extensive process. We moved to a whole new program this year with the, the books for you to make it easier for the selectmen as well. I'm just going over some highlights. We successfully resolved over hundreds of citizen concerns, questions, complaints, positive phone calls, inquiries. I think we really focus on customer service and try to do a really good job for the people that, that call in to our office. Managed the town of Situate Facebook. We have over 1,700 followers now. It's increasing every day since it's only been about a year and a half. I think that's great, and hopefully we'll continue to publish factual information for citizens to review and see. Developed border selectman policy for one-day licenses and made some streamline in the licensing processes. So some, those are some of the big highlights. And the biggest thing was the board and committee training this year. That was a huge endeavor to train all the board and committees and to put the training package together. And it was very well received by the boards and committees, which was great. Some of our goals and, the goals and objectives I have for the selectman's office this year are to prove some of the office efficiencies, getting the packet and streamlining the packet and the information coming from all the different departments to you to make it easy and user-friendly for you to decipher and get it in a timely fashion. Continue ongoing training of our new administrative assistant, Antonetta Fopiano, who's doing an excellent job. She's really coming up to speed on everything, and she's, she's doing great. So we'll continue that. We have a lot of archiving to do for old files for the board of selectmen's office. We have two, I've used two different senior tax write-off program workers to help us at different times of the year for different things. One through the board and committee appointments, and then another one who's helped us with the licensing. They've been terrific. It's been a great asset to our office, and it's great for them, it's great for us. So I love having them. It is a lot of work to train people, but I feel it's, the benefits are well worth it. And the other goal for fiscal year 18, which is a huge goal, is to review and recommend updates for the board of selectman policy book that goes back to the 1990s. There's a lot of old policies that need to be brought up current that we're going to be looking at reviewing with you, making recommendations for some of those. So that's what we'll be focusing on. Do you have any questions on anything? Great.
All right, you do, you do yeoman's work in there. You've really reorganized a lot of things, so thank you.
Oh, thanks.
Some great initiative, so.
If we could get some of those papers filed on my desk, that would be good. And archives.
It's always the hardest part.
Can see over.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Okay, I'm Trish.
Did you want to go through the numbers or, did you say the numbers?
Did you want to go through the numbers?
Just to say.
Isn't this three?
It's all together. It's all together, so.
So through the bowls and.
It's all one, yeah.
All right. Who's next?
I am.
All right, sorry. Kind of get this thing moving, have everybody wake up here, I know.
So, well, all the rest are mine, so we can just take them in order if you want. Where do you want me to go, Mr. Chair?
Wherever you'd like.
Yeah, my goals for FY18, some of which are carryovers. I'll just briefly do them.
That'll be the easiest, yeah.
We talked about a lot of them at the retreat. First one is to manage coastal management review team for an overarching proactive approach to coastal management by exploring new existing and innovative practices and strategies as alternatives to traditional methods. Essentially, this involves what I've talked about in the budget message and with the folks involved in coastal issues is to implement the report we got from Applied Coastal and look at those recommendations and continue what we've already been doing about educating the public about climate change and sea level rise and stuff like that. The second one is a continuing one for our five-year operating and planning budget. Nancy and I showed you a draft. It's sort of reflective of the budget presentation we just did, that we don't only plan for the current year, but we plan for five years out. So it's like a five-year rolling capital plan, except it's a five-year operating budget. We do that in the forecast, but this is much more, has a lot more granularity in terms of where our costs are going. Third one is to continue to develop the human resource function. HR-related salaries and benefits make up over 70% of our budget. Steven's been a great addition, but, you know, we're automating payroll. That's going to require a lot of work over the next year. And just, and I know this will make Mara happy, just documenting a lot of things. Hand personnel policies, handbook, stuff like that. We actually have a draft of a handbook that Steven's picked up that I started in 2010 that we hope to have the board approve, just a compendium of everything in one place that we can hand to employees ranging from cell phone use to where do you get questions answered about your benefits. And then the last one is, yet again, the three buildings and what to do with the old buildings and the work, you know, adaptive reuse of those buildings, gates and the Situate Harbor Community Building and the Fire Station 3 and the Police Station. I mean, one of the things that this budget is predicated on is when you have a new building, the old building comes off online because we cannot afford to maintain them concurrently. So that's going to be a big challenge for us, and the board's probably going to be talking about it at their first February meeting because we're moving, we're moving out of these places. So that's what I have. You have a list of budget challenges and departmental accomplishments. I think it goes, I was saying you got a three-page items pending for me in the packet. There's a lot of work, and there's three of us in your office. And Michelle and Lorraine work long hours and provide superlative customer service, but since we're the conduit for everything in town, it's just, it's pretty crazy there.
Well, let me compliment you on how organized these are. They're very succinct, very well put together. I like the new MUNIS reports.
New format, me too. Yeah, it was hard for input for the department head because it was. but since we're the conduit for everything in town, it's just, it's pretty crazy there.
Let me compliment you on how organized these are. They're very succinct, very well put together. I like the new Munus reports.
New format, me too. Yeah, it was hard for input for the department head because it was the first time they used the new budget sheets, so the level of detail, we're still massaging, but, yeah, we're getting there.
What have been, who's, you said that we combined a bunch of stuff in here. So obviously, between last year's budget and this year's budget.
The numbers are.
Right, so this budget now is 123. You used to have 123 and 149, and now it's just 123. So we pay for the phone. We pay all the training for all the departments. Labor, council, and contract bargaining is in that. Legal council is in.
Was that in a different budget before?
They were split between, yeah, 149. So 149 was sort of like office operation stuff, like office supplies, utility costs, telephone.
But that doesn't exist anymore.
No, it does. It's just all been merged in because there was some redundancy in the line items.
No, no, but there's no 149 tab.
There's no 149 anymore.
What was the budget?
The budget took 149 last year.
Give me one second, I'll get it for you. It's probably right here.
Yeah, they're just trying to see.
Yeah, the original budget for 149 for 17 was a hundred and fifteen thousand, and for 123 it was six hundred and fifty.
So we have a pretty good increase, huh?
So even with that?
You do have a pretty good increase, but.
It's in one line item.
So legal council.
It's in contract bargaining and other services.
Right, labor council.
That is for contract settlements.
So going from 139 to 264.
Is for almost all in that line item.
And is that historically what it's been?
When we're bargaining, yes.
So it doubles in those years.
Yeah, in the third year, every four. I do four-year contracts, so it's probably four years you see it.
And then even legal services and litigation went up twenty thousand?
Yes, we've enjoyed very, very low legal services budgets, but we have some pending litigation, so we've increased it a bit. The other thing in that budget which the board probably doesn't know is that's funding all the FEMA costs.
In that line item?
In that line item, which over the past three years, two years, have been over seventy-five thousand dollars.
And what's the part-time salary? What position is that that wasn't in it last year?
That's Antonetta.
Is it?
Wasn't that somebody else? Wasn't somebody before that?
For a short time.
Karen.
There was, and then Michelle.
Yeah, but that's the part-time salary position. It pays that.
But it went up from fourteen to forty-eight.
If there was part-time salaries in 149 that got collapsed in, so last year, the, excuse me, for a direct pick. The part-time salaries in 149 were thirty-five thousand, and 123 it was fourteen, so it was forty-nine overall.
Okay. And is that because we're taking facts?
We have the building committee secretary, the fax person, Al Bangert, and Dave Giuliano, who's our Facebook kid.
So those weren't in 123 last year?
Right, they were in 149. Yep.
Okay, so the budget last year was 650 and 115 in the other line item. It went up to 922, which is an increase of 765. So 150-something of it, 140 of it is legal, I mean, labor council.
And as you saw in the slide, I think, or it might be in the budget message, a one percent increase for all employees on the town side is a hundred and eighteen thousand So that's how we backed into that number.
Good. Okay.
Insurance. So the next one is insurance, 192.
192? 192.
How did these numbers get assigned?
It's actually, it's a.
Sorry.
It's all right.
Chart of accounts, yeah.
That's it.
So no matter what time you're in, 192 is probably insurance.
The same one. Gotcha.
So we talked about this in the PowerPoint about funding insurance for bringing on the new buildings, which explains the significant increase that you have and what it covers. The other new addition here that we're funding this year, which we never had before, is I put flood insurance on the Situate Harbor Community Building. We have invested over eight hundred thousand dollars in improvements to that building in the last two, three years. So it's pretty low-lying, and we don't have concerns about the Harbor Masters Office, but we did put it on the harbor, and that's a fourteen thousand dollar a year premium.
We're going to get the gym to high school when it comes offline, it'll be empty, but it won't be vacant, correct? Because we're going to still use the gym.
That is correct.
Right. Because if you have a vacant house, it's insurance.
We are hoping that they don't consider it vacant. That's because that gym is totally bifurcated from the main building.
It's totally what?
It's not connected to the main building.
I'd argue it is. You know, you cannot separate it.
Teed it by the same source, right?
Excuse me?
Yeah, teed it by the same source.
Right, right.
I don't disagree, but it's not going to be our opinion, it's going to be.
Right, but there's departments that we can move over there possibly. Right.
Just a question, Tricia, you mentioned eight hundred thousand roughly put into the Harbor Community Building. Is that in addition to, or does it include the money that got ready for the library kind of thing?
It includes that.
Okay.
That's since we acquired, I mean, it has a new roof, new walls, and, you know, we've used money for the NPTA mitigation, new bathrooms.
And the library.
There's a bathroom being done this year in the capital plan. The HP bathroom needs to be done over, so. I think it's about eight hundred. I can give you an exact, but it does include, it does include the library money.
Okay.
So it's actually going from 552 to 661, predominantly because of all the new buildings we need to insure.
Yep. And the thing with Myers, they won't vote their rates until we get them in March. I think they actually vote them at the MMA. They have meetings over two days during the MMA conference, and then they go back and do the adjustments and stuff, and we find out sometime in February, but obviously not enough time to do this budget.
Who's on that committee?
The.
The insurance committee?
The Meyer Insurance Committee. It's made up of Selectmen and town managers.
I'm just curious. Go to reserve fund?
Reserve funds, 132. So our reserve fund has been ninety thousand dollars forever, and for the last three years, we have hardly spent a dime out of it, which is pretty unbelievable when you think that we have an eighty-two million dollar budget. Years ago, I worked for a town that had a 3.2 million dollar budget, and their reserve fund was 200,000 dollars. So Nancy and I are recommending that this be reduced, 15,000 in the FY18 budget, just as another way to sort of apply funds that we needed for other increases.
Use it, tap it this year? I remember doing that.
Not yet.
I think so.
We transfer it though, too.
Usually.
Don't we transfer to Snow or Ice?
The last couple of years, we've been funding it by free cash at town meeting or other budget lines.
So the 90 closes out to free cash.
Then going back to free cash, as I thought. I haven't recalled doing it.
You're going to say it doesn't roll over, it's just.
Yeah, it closes.
Good.
Otherwise, it'd be pretty big.
Workers' compensation.
912.
912. This was supposed to be the year we didn't have to make an appropriation because we had reached our fund balance goal of 750,000 dollars. Unfortunately, we've had a couple of ongoing and costly claims putting us in a position to be able to do that, so we have to allocate 210,000. It's down from the previous year of 257, but in a perfect world, we had hoped this would be maybe 35, 40,000 dollars just to pay the cost of third-party administration and reinsurance.
Nancy, do the percentages vary across the board on the workers' comp for the town based upon the individual occupation and stuff?
It does in our premiums.
Right.
Yeah, so I can tell you from experience that the most expensive rated job would be tree climbing.
I was going to say, yeah. If you had a roofer, it'd be number one, but.
That was the.
How many tree climbers?
We don't know many, Nancy.
Probably not.
Oh, if we had it.
Same classification.
All right, okay, I was going to say.
From having to do the workers' comp.
Arm detonators is up there, too.
Everybody in classification, that's the worst classification to have.
Solid waste trash haulers up there, too. But we don't have any of those.
Don't get, don't get mine.
So where's the balance? Where's the accrual balance?
We're just over 500,000 dollars at the close of 2016. Transferred in another 200,000 dollars.
Seventeen?
Yeah, seventeen. We took a hit in 16, we lost ground because of the changes that we had since 16. Most of those claims are still active, so the mission statement gives a little blur of where we are for six months.
So, Tony, you're missing a page in this budget that has all that information. As you see, the first page says major budget components. That's an oversight. We'll print that page and give you the sheet the next time.
Is this the one that I put the book again?
This one?
Is just Tony missing it?
No.
To be honest, I mean, town employees get injured. That's what the workers' comp's for, and you know what? That's why we put it there. So I have no issues with the fact that we have to go another year to pay 210,000 dollars. You know, it's a good thing that we have, that's all we have to worry about. That's how I see it.
You can see it's peaking now. It's, we've been.
We've been really good, yeah, and that allowed us to build up the fund balance.
It happens, and when it does.
Well, yeah, it's cyclical, so you have to expect it. That's why you have a goal of a fund balance. You just don't fund it because what we're doing is we weren't funding it so much when we had good years, you know, prior to 2009.
And then wipe it out.
But when you're self-insured, you have to have a fund goal, so, just to guard against that.
Can we move on to disability access, 549?
549, where's that? Oh, come, let me do my own thing.
Five thousand, five thousand, five thousand.
So this budget, we fund 5,000 dollars every year, and traditionally, that 5,000 dollars goes to offset rides at the Council on Aging, and has been used for that purpose in the past. This year, it has been used frequently by the Chair of the Commission of Disabilities to attend some training and help bring some additional expertise to that committee, but it's been level-funded.
Move on to advisory, 131.
My number, 131?
131, yeah.
Thank you.
Advisory, the only expenses that have increased over the past few years for advisory has been in printing the booklets. Up until a couple of years ago, we just sent out to print the annual town meeting advisory committee booklet. Now they send out the special town meeting one, and if we have more than one special town meeting in a year, like one year we had three, that drives the cost. It just pays for a few dues and for their clerk, and their budget was reduced based on historical expenditures by 1700 dollars.
I was ever going to ask you, so I noticed it's way, it's pretty far down.
So what I do when I look at the budget is I look at five years of prior history as of June 30th in terms of what they have for surplus and what they spent year-to-date, and that's what I base a lot of my budget recommendations on. So clearly, they'll be very comfortable with this amount, and.
And if there's a shortfall, not saying there would be, then we'd be able to fund it for them and take care of whatever the cost would be for any booklets or anything.
Right, right. I mean, there's enough flexibility in the budget that if something went short, I mean, it's an overall 5,000 dollar budget, and again, that just depends on the number of meetings, but.
I just want to tell them.
Plus, they control the reserve fund.
But we want to tell them that we don't want any creep in their budget.
Well, you know, one of the things we have to avoid is Kathy's budget always used to have for an extra town meeting, just in case we had an extra town meeting, and we'd be tying up that money for a whole year. So the better part, really, longer term, and this is the same situation, is not to tie up several thousand dollars for what might happen. In these kinds of instances, you plan for what you've actually experienced because we can go to the reserve fund if we have unexpected things. So, and that's what's happened here.
We have a discussion of vote of some, renewals of drain layers licenses.
That's it for the budget, right?
That's it.
That was really quick, Mr. Chair. I have to say, that has got to be probably the quickest budget review initial.
Pushing it along, John.
Nine years, I'm telling you. But I'm just doing it because the next one, we'll probably have a lot more discussion on.
Careful what you wish for, John.
Yeah, I know. In the order of budgets, this is the easy. One motion?
Please.
Move to approve a renewal of a drain layers license to the following businesses. Sean, you should be doing this, you know all these. Dandell Construction, Inc., how do you say that one?
Iaria.
Iaria Brothers, Inc., McDuber Brothers Enterprises, LLC, Wranglers Escavating Corp., Topman Enterprises, Sean Farrell Escavation, Inc., PF Spencer Jr., Inc., E.L. Margates &amp; Sons, Inc., McGecran Contracting, Inc., Joseph Bonomi, Mankiewicz Contracting, Inc., and Jones Contracting, Inc.
Second? Second, Mr. Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Was there a second set of those, Lorraine, or are they all together in there?
I put them all together.
Okay, because I noticed the original, they were separated, right?
They're two packages, but I put them all together.
Okay, awesome. Just make sure we didn't miss anybody. Okay, next, we're going to move on to a discussion of vote of the new board committee applicant for the Public Building Commission.
I move to appoint Stephen L. Smith to the Public Buildings Commission.
Shay.
Shay, I'm sorry.
We changed your name.
It's interesting to see if you heard me, I'm just checking. I move to appoint Stephen Shay to the Public Buildings Commission for a term of three years or until the successor is named.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
It's a good thing you stayed here.
Make sure you get the name right.
Mr. Smith would be going, what?
Okay. Do we have any correspondence?
Nope, just the slew.
The schedule that you already.
Yeah, we pretty much covered it.
Yeah.
We have approval of some meeting minutes?
I move the Board of Selectmen to approve the meeting minutes of December 20th, 2016.
Second?
Second, Mr. Vignani, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I move to accept and not release executive session minutes for December 20th, 2016, since the matters discussed are still pending at this time.
Second?
Second, Mr. Vignani, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, I will accept a motion to enter it into.
Other business?
Oh, I'm sorry. Other business? Tony, you must have something.
Actually, I don't, but by the time Mara's done, I'll come up with something.
Actually, I have something, too. I just, I just woke up.
You just woke up?
No, I just woke up.
Oh, okay. Okay. I just wanted to commend Greg Murray, our latest Eagle Scout awardee, honoree. He did a nice project for the Monsters Museum, building some extra picnic tables, so it's always great to have those Eagle Scouts, and, you know, Situate just seems to keep moving along with some great young men with some good character and achieving some great things there, so I was honored to go to that. So I love going to that.
That's a right.
You know, it's always obvious that I'm not an Eagle Scout, so it's, it's a great thing, especially as a mom of girls, I don't get to see a lot of the nice young men in town there.
Such a small percentage of, you know.
Yeah, four percent.
That's huge.
Yeah.
And not many.
So it was nice. So that was good. And then I also attended with Trish and Kevin and Chief Murphy and Chief Stewart the public safety meeting on Monday. The Secretary of Public Safety from the state came down, Jim Cantwell, Joe Machino, and Senator O'Connor hosted that. It was a nice forum to kind of listen and learn what other. The Secretary of Public Safety from the state came down, Jim Cantwell, Joe Machino, and Senator O'Connor hosted that. It was a nice forum to kind of listen and learn what other towns are doing. Chief Murphy shared our best practices and things that we were doing. And I didn't tell you this, but after the meeting, the Mima representative came up to me and really complimented Chief Murphy and really enjoys working with him. So, I just thought I would share that and thank the chief for that. And it was a nice session, some things to take and learn and good stuff.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Tricia, Charlie going to deliver the draft this week, you think? It's still, still scheduled?
I have received it yesterday. I forwarded it to Mr. Moan, he has already reviewed it and that is on my to-do list now that this is done. So, some things have, so, yeah. So, there's that.
Great, thank you.
Nothing.
I was just going to say that I wanted to thank the Bogotavon for wonderful, we had a, I guess I can consider a Christmas party, a holiday party, this past Friday night. Again, they did an awesome job and it was, it was a good time, so I just want to thank them. That's all I have.
Good? Yeah, we're good.
I will accept the motion to enter it into executive session for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease of value of real property. I declare that having the discussion open session would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the town in regards to St. Francis Cabrini. We will not be returning.
Sure. I'll move the board of selectmen go into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, St. Francis Cabrini.
Second?
Will call vote, Mr. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Denham?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Good night, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.